I call to order the Rosemount Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 22, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's get started. I do see there is at least one change to the agenda for today. We're going to swear in some new commissioners.
That is correct, Chair Reed. Item 1A is added to swear in our new and returning commissioners.
Thank you.
There are no other additions to the agenda.
Thank you. Logan, are you going to?
Yeah, yeah, if the three want to come on down, we can get it done.
No, just the, it's going to be on the boards. You're not removing your, you've got a three-year term.
Okay, please repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Charles.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That also the Constitution of the United States.
That also the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of LaSota.
And of the State of LaSota.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully serve the duties.
Those planning commissioners in the city of Rosemount.
Will plan the commission of the city of Rosemount.
In the county of Dakota.
In the county of Dakota.
And the state of LaSota.
The state of LaSota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So, all may have.
So, all may have.
I want to thank and express my gratitude that Commissioner Rivera and Commissioner Ellis are back for another turn, and extend a welcome to Commissioner Arndt. Glad you had to have here. Thank you. Okay, so now on the agenda is the time we have any audience input. This is really a time where the audience members can come forward to talk about any items not on the agenda. If so, please come forward with your questions stating your full name and address. All right, seeing no audience input, we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. We have just one item on the consent agenda today, which is approval of the minutes of the March 17, 2025 regular meeting. Are there any questions about the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Buji. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pass. All right, next up is any old business. Do we have any old business?
There's no old business, Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Anthony. Next up on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing item first is a request by David Kenzinger and APRO Development for approval on a site plan review to construct the combination coffee shop and wine bar.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. This is a site plan review request by David Kenzinger and APRO Development to construct a combination coffee shop wine bar at 14557 South Robert Trail. The subject property is located in the northeast corner of the lot that currently is the site of the Morrison in the downtown area. As I said, they're proposing a combination coffee shop wine bar. The site will have a drive-through and outdoor dining area as well. The development site was originally approved for a restaurant called Tap Society back in 2021. That project did not move forward, but the site area is generally the same. I do have some slides showing that for context. Staff does find the site plan to meet the standards of the MX-1 Downtown Mixed Use Zoning District and is recommending approval of this request. So, as you can see here, this aerial shows the general location of the proposed business the planning commission is reviewing this evening. The Morrison itself is the large building here, and then some, this is a temporary parking area that was paved over to await for development, just provide for a cleaner site for the city. So, as you can see here, this was the site as it was just being paved. It was not part of the original site plan for the Morrison, nor was the parking provided in that area taken into account. But here is the current day condition of that site. You can tell that the striping of this area was temporary in nature. There's no parking lot landscaping provided in there. The site itself does have three access points. The two main in-out areas are located on 145th and then South Robert Trail, and then there is one single access that is entrance only just south of the Dakota Awards Business. As I said, in 2021, the Tap Society had received approval for its site plan on the site here. A little bit bigger building with no drive-through component, but making use of the same site area being considered today. To provide a little context of how the development will fit in the overall Morrison planned unit development area, you can see here in the northeast corner, there is that one entry-only access, and then access coming from the north down into the site, and then from the south as well up into the site. The drive-through, and I do have a more blown-up closer-in-site plan, but the drive-through will be located on the east side of the building, similar to how Culvers has their drive-through south of the subject property. So, zooming in a little bit further, you can see the site layout itself here. One thing to note with regards to the drive-through, a longer-than-typical peninsula is provided here to really force the vehicles out further from these parking areas to allow vehicles in there to exit if there are vehicles lined up for the drive-through. So, the downtown mixed-use zoning district does not have any minimum parking stalls required. There's no front side or rear setbacks required in this downtown mixed-use zoning district, and the maximum lot coverage is 90%. It's the highest lot coverage allowed within the city, and these standards are there to encourage dense walkable development in the downtown area. So, the site plan itself provides 12 stalls of parking. The Morrison has a parking ratio of 1.48 stalls per unit, and that is subtracting out these temporary parking stalls that were striped on the temporary painted paved area. Those stalls are provided both underground, on the surface, and some auxiliary parking here to the north. Just for a point of reference, Cambrian Commons has 1.3 parking stalls per unit, and Waterford Commons has 1.19 parking stalls per unit. So, the Morrison is providing parking that's consistent, if not more so, than the other apartments in the downtown area. Staff would also note that there's nearly 200 stalls of public parking located near City Hall and within the park-and-ride across 145th Street West from City Hall. As I said, there are three access points into the site. There's two full accesses, one from Highway, 145th Street West, and then again, the main entrance into the Morrison area, and then lastly, that one entrance only to the north. So, just a little, again, reference on how that will play out. Staff is recommending at least one condition, that there is directional signage installed near the exit of the drive-through that would give cars entering from Highway 3 the right-of-way there, so that they're not delayed waiting for a car to leave the drive-through here. There's also a left-turn-only striping shown on the site plan. When the Morrison was originally approved, traffic generation analysis was submitted for that project. The existing use of, existing mix of uses at that time could be, could have been expected to generate 2,700 trips per day. That was through a, the old mall, a restaurant, the automotive repair shop, and the salon that was located on the site. Residential uses generate fewer trips. The proposed business would be about a quarter of the size of the previous restaurant, resulting in an estimated trip generation of 1,269 per day, still below what could have been anticipated prior. Here's some elevations of the proposed business. The exterior will be clad in a limestone material. There will be awnings and pilasters to provide additional visual interest on that exterior, as well as a roof-mounted sign in that southeast corner there. You can see here the outdoor dining area as well as the drive-through, although no landscaping is shown on these renderings. So, the drive-through itself, unlike other business districts in Rosemount, there is no actual minimum requirement for stacking. The plan does show room for 10 cars to stack. Given the position on the site and the distance from the two main entrances, there's even more stacking that could occur on the site, but staff would note that providing stacking for 10 cars is in excess of what would even be required in any of our other business zoning districts, like you would find on County Road 42, both near Chippendale or at Akron Avenue. And the applicant does have a cross-access agreement with the Morrison that allows vehicles that are visiting their site to come through the Morrison parking lot and make use of the Morrison's accesses on 3 and 145th Street West. The drive-through does have some screening included with it. The applicant has provided both a concept for a combination screening wall and landscaping, as well as the landscape plan shows evergreen shrubbery in place that would meet the screening requirements of the code. As I said, directional signage should be planned for by the applicant, instructing drivers that are leaving the drive-through to yield to those vehicles that are exiting Highway 3 here. And since we are on this close-in site plan, you can see there's parking provided in the rear of the building, and then also around the sides. Here's some examples of the screening and signage the applicant is considering for the drive-through. If this is not implemented, the applicant would have to install the landscaping in accordance to the landscaping plan, which I will show you in the next slide or two. The site landscaping meets the requirements of the code. The code requires one tree for every 3,000 square feet of area, one foundation plant per every 10 linear feet of exterior building perimeter, and then 10% of the parking lot area needs to be landscaped with one tree per stall, one tree per 10 stalls is my typo there. So, as you can see on the table, the provided landscaping exceeds that, meets or exceeds that which is required by the code. Also note that, before I get into the landscaping layout here, there is a plan for trash enclosure in this northwestern portion of the building. The enclosure would match the exterior materials of the building itself and blend in with that. It's facing away from the right-of-way, which is a requirement of the city code as well. So, onto the landscaping here, you can see there's seven trees provided, four in the outer areas, a couple ornamental trees, significant shrubbery placed around the outdoor dining or seating area, and then perimeter landscaping both around the trees and the shrubs here, and then along the east side of the drive-through area, as well as along the northern property boundary as well. So, staff is recommending approval, finding that the site plan meets the requirements of the code and the standards of the MX-1 Downtown Mixed Use Zoning District. That motion recommended by staff also includes conditions. Perhaps the most poignant one would be the directional signage. There's also a condition related to the screening of the drive-through, a kind of a standard condition related to lighting. I will note that the lighting plan provided by the applicant shows wall-mounted lights, and the photometric analysis does not exceed one lumen at any of the property boundaries in accordance with the city code. Staff also is recommending one last condition, that a sidewalk be striped connecting the subject property to the Morrison across the driveway. This was something that was included in the original approval for the Tap Society, and that would go from this curb ramp to the curb ramp that's over here on the west side attached to the sidewalk that goes around the Morrison building to provide that pedestrian connection there. I think that is what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do know that the applicant and representatives from the Morrison and the developer, APRO, would, are here as well to speak to any operational or other questions that staff is unable to answer.
Thank you, Anthony. Could you bring up the aerial view that you made with, yeah, perfect, thank you. Just a couple clarifying questions. So, the up, let's see, the northwest corner there, the pedestrian walkway is really intended for Morrison residents who are walking over typically, like to the coffee house?
Correct, correct. There are two pedestrian accesses to the sidewalk along Highway 3, crossing the drive-through lane here, and those are shown as striped on the site plan as well.
Excellent, thank you. And then in the northeast corner there, the drive-through traffic is going to go left, right?
Correct.
They're going to have, if I'm in the drive-through and I picked up my order before I go left, there'll be a sign there that says "Yield to Incoming Traffic" or something of that effect.
Correct.
To, for the, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
My question would be about that same, that northeast access point there, and I don't, I'm trying to imagine how much space there is, and I don't know, but I'm wondering if we could, is it, my concern is that you're going to get people coming out of there and trying to turn right, which would then, I mean, at 7:30 in the morning, cause a problem with a lot of kids that are speeding to get to school and everything else. And if they're going to try to turn right there and then try to turn north onto 3, it'd get more exciting than I'd like it to be. Is there any way to curb that? You know, so you see some places where like, there's almost like a little shoulder on the curb that really would force people to go left, or any, you know, I don't know if that's the kind of thing that we can ask for, or we can talk with applicant about, but something like that to make it, to make it harder for people to screw that up, because otherwise, I mean, oh, I can make it.
Yep.
And then they can't, right? So, that would be my only kind of question or comment.
And I would let the applicant or the developer speak to that, but I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and my end, the only other thing I was curious about was on the south parking of the Morrison on the east side. Like, if they try to exit north and go left, they could get blocked in if a car's coming into the drive-through, because that, that should be like one-way, right?
In which?
So, if you back out, yeah, go south and then to the left, yep, right there?
Yeah.
So, like if a car's coming out of that parking lot south of there, and then goes north, they kind of get boxed, they could get boxed in if a car's coming in to the drive-through.
So, there's, certainly there would be some potential for slow-ups and things like that if the parking lot is full. I would assume, and I don't want to speak for other drivers, because I'm a much better driver than everyone else on the road.
[laughing]
But, you know, I think, I think if there's people living in there, they're going to know when the busy times are, and they're also going to understand that they can go south, loop around the parking lot, and go the other drive lane out as well.
So, the car on the bottom there, that's kind of facing towards the drive-through?
Right here, yeah.
That would have to go through the drive-through, right? That can't go left.
Right, correct.
And so, if somebody was parking in that parking lot, they would just need to know, you can't go north out of there to exit out.
Yeah.
You have to go through the drive-through.
Yeah, and I think I would defer to the owner of the Morrison and how they would be communicating some of this with their residents as well, and helping to ensure that they understand.
Yeah.
You know, what's going on.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the public hearing. First, I'll note that we do have some written comments, a lot of points about the Morrison and flow as well. I think we'll take those at the end as we answer the public comments. The process will be that for those who come forward with a comment, we'll write those down, and we'll answer all the comments at the end after we close the public hearing. If you would like, wish like to speak, please come up, state your name and address. We'd like, if possible, to keep the comments to about three minutes. We've got a large group today. And then if you've heard a comment that's already come up, and you'd just be repeating it, you know, be cognizant of that, and please not repeat questions. So, with that, I'd like to invite public up for comments.
And before I step back, thank you for bringing up the written comments, and that the planning commission has gotten those, because we can definitely address those following the public hearing as well.
Thanks, Anthony. Would we like, was the applicant here, or is the Morrison representative? Maybe that's a good place to start?
I guess I was volunteered to start. Some of you know me, because I've been around for a long time. Mike Waldo with Ron Clark Construction, were part of the original development team and part owners of the Morrison today, along with the Bader fan, with the Bader Group. And then the Bader team is also the manager of the property. So, I think from my perspective, I really just want to kind of, again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. One of the big things, I think from a, I'll try to keep not screw this up anymore, okay, is kind of the history of the project. Some of you that have been around the planning commission for longer periods know that this is probably going on eight, nine years now. I think I was developing the Brockway Glass Factory when Kim said, you've got to come redevelop this mall. Okay, that would have been 28 years ago. So, it took us a few years to get the mall ready to go. So, and I think a lot of you who are involved know that one of the key components to the downtown, and when we brought the residential component, was keeping some retail. We had talked originally about retail going under the building, which has very, doesn't work very well. I mean, there's probably five instances in Twin Cities where those are actually successful compared to creating a pad site, where they can have signage, have their own identity, and do the things. We were excited when the Tap Society came in. Unfortunately, COVID hit right then, and as you know, the restaurants at that time, that was a very hard thing, and a few other issues with their current site, which had road construction for seven months as they were trying to get going. So, we've been kind of patient, along with the city being patient over the last four years, since then, waiting to find what we felt was the right use to complement our apartment, because ultimately, we're the owners of the apartment. We need to make sure that our apartment's successful. We also need to make sure that David's business is successful at the same time, and that the synergies and the positives outweigh the few negatives that will be there. And so, I think that's some of the things that you saw in one of the letters, I think, was more, how does that, how do those two pieces work together? And so, I think from our perspective, that is really, the focus has been creating kind of the standalone building, creating the flow of traffic. If you look back to the original Plumeri Platt that was approved with the Morrison way before the Tap Society, it looks almost identical to what we've done here. We've tried to get businesses to fit within that. We did have a concept for a drive-through back then, knowing that it needed to be the right use for that to happen, and I think this is the use that truly makes sense, and the screening that they're doing along 3 really adds to it. It's not a Starbucks where that's the only, the main, that's 70% of their business is drive-through. This is a business where I see that being more 25 to 30%, but it's usually the difference between being profitable and not being profitable. So, I think it's important for the drive-through to be there. I think staff and David and teams have worked well to add additional stacking internal of the building, so that before you even get to the parking lot, you've got eight stalls even before you get out there, and that's a real important piece, because outside of maybe an hour a day, you're not going to have more than that. So, I think that's what we tried to accomplish, which benefits us and our residents, along with benefits them. As staff talked about, the traffic was all originally planned for, and we're about half of what the original was. Definitely that wasn't probably meeting at those levels at the time, but still, even the current traffic counts back then, even with the half-full mall and the restaurant and the automotive shop and the salon, we were still going to be less than that, and I think that still meets with what we're at today. Parking, as I said, I knew when I blacktopped that section to kind of keep, because it was muddy and people were still driving through it, but you know, we're going to blacktop it, allow it to be used, make sure, because we weren't sure if it was going to take us two years or five years. But, everything originally was approved with that being not part of our parking. And I think actually at the time, the city was willing to allow us less than that 1.48, and I think we kind of pushed for trying to keep that, because, again, we're still in a verb. We're still, it's not like we're doing something in downtown Minneapolis where you can get by at .7 cars. Here, you need to have that one and a half. We've got a few extra, we've got some two bedrooms, we've got three bedrooms. So, we know that per bedroom, we still have more stalls than bedrooms, which is usually the criteria we try to adopt for that. I think another thing, unfortunately, with Morning Glory leaving, I think this does really kind of fill another void that when we lost that, we actually talked to them originally to see if he was interested in coming across, and at the time, I think he was ready to move on when the, when his lease wasn't renewed. So, I think that's another, you know, huge positive that we're not replacing a business, we're replacing a business that actually is already gone. I think beyond that, I, David and his team will kind of go through the proposal and the elevations and everything else. I'll be available for additional questions, both now and if there's questions after anyone else speaks. I appreciate your time.
Thanks. I just have one question. Aside from the applicant and the actual build-out here, do you plan any additional signage for the Morrison residents, and you're part of the parking lot or exits or things like that?
Probably, we'll just communicate with internally. Our management staff communicates with them, and if we run across issues, we'll end up, initially during construction, we'll meet with them once a week, with the applicant and the constructor and the contractor and our team, and then as we go along, we'll meet once a month. If we're telling that we don't need that, eventually be once a quarter. But, our expectation is that our onsite management team and the management team of the restaurant and the, and the coffee shop will meet on almost a continual basis for as long as need be. That's kind of how we do it on any other situations where we've got shared usage of a site like this.
That's great. Appreciate that partnership, yeah. And so, as kind of representative for Morrison, you're comfortable with the plan here and the flow of traffic?
I'm very comfortable. Is it perfect? No. I mean, that's the reality of anything, but I think with the concepts of what we were after, what the city was after, we feel very strongly this checks all the boxes, and that any small issues we get related to stacking and some of the things, and God forbid, they're that successful, that occasionally there is 10 cars in that lot, that's actually a good thing. I think hopefully our residents will see the positive of being able to walk across, you know, a little striped intersection and go sit and have a glass of wine or have a cup of coffee in the morning, so.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Thank you.
We'll have David come up next. Hello, I am David Kenzinger, the applicant. I am...
Can you also state your address, please, full address?
Full address?
Yeah.
Home address?
Yeah.
3585 Clair Downs Path in Rosemount.
Thank you.
I've been, my wife and I, who are partners in this venture together, she unfortunately can't be here with us today. She's at Gillette Children's with one of my daughters who had surgery this morning, so we're rolling quick here today. We moved to Rosemount about eight or nine years ago with our six daughters, and two years ago, I purchased a co-owner of the Historic Garrity Building right on the corner, as well as Rosemount Floral. My wife has turned that business into a thriving boutique and gift shop, and has grown the floral business as well, and has done an excellent job with that. Just for a little historical context, we really got into that venture to take the Garrity Building on the corner and turn it into a coffee shop. So, the coffee idea had always been part of the plan. What we kind of relatively quickly learned is that the building there really didn't suit a coffee shop very well, after analyzing it in more depth. And then, you know, the idea of a drive-through being almost a necessity for the success of a coffee shop these days really kind of said, well, this isn't the right fit. So, the opportunity to get a hold of this, this piece of land and continue our vision for Rosemount and for our family. and for our family came up, and we jumped at it. And we've got an excellent team that's put together a really, really nice plan for us that we think can be very successful in town here. The real, and I wish Erica was here to talk to it, she's the visionary, but the coffee shop itself is more meant to bring people back together. I think pre-COVID times, when not everybody just wanted to use their mobile app and sit in the drive-through. It's a little bit of a risk to take that approach because drive-throughs are so on the go. Everybody's on the move and everything. But we're trying to create an elevated space in downtown Rosemount where people want to come and sit, have a coffee, have a glass of wine. One of the key features of the business is that we're creating not only just a kind of a, call it a standard coffee shop feel, although somewhat elevated, we're also creating a portion of it that's catering to more craft, a craft coffee or wine experience as well, and we're calling that the barista bar, where people can come in and tell a work and hang out, socialize, and get a more curated experience. So it's an experiential fit for everybody. The closing of Morning Glory, and we know the owner over there well, after establishing the flower shop and creating relationships with most of the people in downtown Rosemount, is a gap that Rosemount now has. With only a Caribou and a Starbucks, really, there's no local coffee. And so we're looking to bring that back. And this plan, I think, does accomplish that. And like they've said, the success at the flower shop, that same kind of feel that we have done there, will follow into this space. And hopefully, do what we want, get people, the community to come together, sit down, have a good time, enjoy a glass of wine on the patio. And sure, we'll have the drive-through too, but...
Did you happen to hear the question that Commissioner, it was a question and idea, a great idea. Commissioner Ellis mentioned about the drive-through and preventing cars turning right?
Yeah, and I've actually walked over from the flower shop and stood in that space and visualized that because I had the same concern. And I think it, I think it still is a valid concern that we should look at. And I think with, you know, working with APRA here, we can definitely come up with a way to, and I'll let them speak to that with their ideas. It's a great idea if we can do kind of a curved median of some sort that kind of just forces somebody, you know, makes it a lot harder for them to turn back the right way. But I think it can be, I think it can be successful with the right signage and, you know, some nudging.
Are there other questions from the commissioners?
David, can you just maybe mention, you mentioned it's coffee, wine. I assume there's going to be some type of food?
Yep. Yeah, it'll be a relatively simple, small-plates-type menu. Fresh, we're not, there's no fryer in our plan. So it'll be more fresh food, small plates, kind of a curated seasonal menu.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nadia Ritter of APRA Development at 21476 Granada Avenue in Lakeville.
Thanks. You may need to step a little closer to the mic.
Sorry. And so we, there's not too much to add. I think our team summed it up pretty well. As to your point with preventing people from turning right, we are working with a great team of civil engineers who have helped us put together this plan, and we can definitely communicate with them to try and force people to turn left and make it seem not an option, even though some people will still probably try, just because that's what they'll do. But happy to field any questions in relation to the elevations or any of the internal workings of it as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll make it.
I submitted written comments by email, and I just want to make sure you have them. That's why I didn't. Susan Jemsey, 14589.
Yes, I believe we do.
Okay. And then the only other question I would have about not turning right for the coffee shop? You're not planning on telling the people coming up out of the garage that they can't turn right or left, right?
We'll note that question and we will, yes. Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Are you taking just comments on it or does that have to be questions?
Nope, come on up. No, no, comments are fine, yeah, come on up.
My name is Daniel Nass. I live at 13665 Keritch Avenue, and I've lived in Rosemount since about 2018. Something I've noticed in this town is the gathering places that are here in that downtown area have been there a while. It's the same old thing. It's not something unique. And I think that this concept that Dave has here is very interesting. When I first heard about it, I'm like, "Has that ever been done before? In the way that you guys have it?" And he said he didn't think so, and I couldn't think of one either. So I think it could be something that helps make Rosemount more of a destination, rather than just someplace to pass through or maybe stop for a burger. The developers themselves, I've known Dave for about two years, and the folks that I've met here in Rosemount so far, I must say that one of the most thoughtful and responsible people that I've met, both him and Erica. And I think probably what they've done in their previous projects here have spoken to that. I guess I just encourage the Planning Commission to give strong consideration to this project and work hard to find any solutions, any concerns, so that could go forward.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? All right, then I will make a move, movement to close the public hearing?
Second.
Movement by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Anthony, there were some questions in the, the resident came up and mentioned about the parking situation, kind of entering and exiting the parking lot. I don't know if you can do that or...
Yeah, so the circulation in the site, people coming up the ramp out of the garage, they would be able to go north or south. It's just this one access is going to be restricted to entrance only, which it is currently arrowed and painted for entrance only. And I'm sure there's people that aren't. It'll be much more clear when there's the development there and the drive-through in place and signage and things like that. But residents leaving the drive-through or the garage area would go, could go south to the southern Highway 3 access or north to the 145th if they find it easier to go that way. I know there were some questions related to snow removal and things like that, that I would certainly defer to Mr. Waldo on that as they manage the site. But I can certainly stand anything else that has come to the commission so far.
We'll do that next. Are there any other questions? Okay. Mr. Waldo, if you don't mind coming up?
Yeah, from a snow removal standpoint, we'd like years like this where there isn't as much snow to move. But when it gets to be more than that, they end up hauling it away. So that's usually what happens. If we start to encroach on more than one or two stalls during the process, then that snow will be hauled away part of the contract. So that's something we manage very closely to make sure, because it really, other than that, there really isn't any place else to store it here, so.
And so you're not concerned about snow and removing it and places to put it and so on?
No, it's just the nature of the beast now where most sites are tight enough that unless you have something where a pond or something you can dump it into close by, it needs to be hauled away.
Okay. Is there a change to the dumpsters, the location of the dumpsters with this?
No, I think what the dumpsters are inside the lower garage, and what they do is they've got a little cart that actually brings them up to the top, and then they, the truck comes and grabs them there. So that should function the same.
I think we've answered most of the other questions. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Anthony, should we, what do you think about putting, should we put a condition on about the plan being updated per Commissioner Ellis's idea?
So I think staff would recommend just kind of have that as a direction to the applicant. I think the civil engineers need to look and see if the geometrics of the drive-through and the entrance point work, if there's room to put a kind of a extra curb that we do see in some other areas for right-only or right-in, right-out type access points. So I would, I would, I would say you probably don't need to add a condition of approval, and I think we would work with the applicant to find out what their civil engineers say about the ability. And if possible, we would just recommend that the council, actually, this isn't going to the council, but I think that they would probably work to get that installed. If the commission feels more comfortable adding a condition that the applicant work with their civil engineers to identify an opportunity to provide curbing, that's certainly an option as well.
I think that's a fair, a fair thing. I'm sure that they're, they sound like they're already open to that. So I think a carefully worded additional condition would be good on that one. So let's see here. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
I just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I think it's a good addition to downtown Rosemount. I was on the Planning Commission originally when the Morrison was built, and it was always mixed, it was always designed for that business use there in the corner of the parking lot, so that's nothing new. Unfortunately, with Morning Glory leaving the community, you know, it's just good timing for a good fit for downtown. And one thing about Starbucks, yes, it's just right up the road, but there's only one access into there. So at least you have two accesses in and out of this location. So that gives you more access for that time of day, I guess, for coffee. So I think it's a good, a good addition.
Okay, I agree. I've been like around long enough to see this, a few plans come through. The original Morrison, where we had extensive reviews of traffic and flows, as well as the tap room and so on. So I think it's great this is finally coming to light. So with that, I'm going to make a motion, because I'll add this condition on. So I'll make a motion to approve the proposed site plan allowing David Kenson and APRA Development to construct a combination coffee shop/wine bar at 14557 South Robert Trail, subject to the following conditions numbered one through four, with the addition of condition five stating that the applicant will work with their engineers and city planners to define a, an exit, a safe exit design, preventing drive-through traffic from exiting onto three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Boogie. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next up on the agenda is another public hearing item, the second of three. It's a request for Planned Unit Development Final Site and Building Plan and a minor amendment to the Preswick Place Planned Unit Development Agreement to construct a 10,000-foot, square-foot restaurant.
All right. Perfect. All right, so a little bit of an overview of the project summary. So the Planning Commission is being asked to consider a request by the applicant for PUD Final Site and Building Plan to construct a 10,000-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining spaces. Also included with this request is a minor amendment to the Preswick Place Planning and Development Agreement to allow for a decrease in the off-street parking and exterior material requirements also is being requested. So a little bit overview of the site location. So the site is located in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Akron Avenue and Connaughtmere Trail, and also immediately west of Lifetime Fitness, which you can see is outlined in red. The subject property is part of the Preswick Place PUD Development Area, which was originally approved back in 2007. The proposed project encompasses one of the three outlots that was approved with the Preswick Place 23rd Edition for commercial development. The applicant applied for a final plat to split the outlot into two parcels, which you can see is outlined to separate those two parcels, with the southern parcel being buildable, and then the northern parcel being an outlot, which will be reserved for future development. This was approved by the City Council at their April 15, 2025, meeting. So overview of the site plan. So the site area is approximately 2.6 acres in size, and the current zoning is MX-2 PUD, which is highway mixed-use planning and development. The comp plan land use designation for the site is CC Community Commercial. So like I had mentioned, proposed on the site is a 10,000-square-foot, two-story restaurant, which will contain an outdoor patio space on the main level, and then a rooftop patio area on the second level. The restaurant is shown to be located in the southwest corner of the site, with parking area shown on the east side of the site, and as well as the north and northeast side of the principal structure. The site plan does show the development meets all setback requirements for the principal building and also the parking areas. I would also like to mention that outdoor dining areas are accessory uses that are now permitted uses with standards within the MX-2 zoning district. Outdoor dining areas are subject to seven performance standards that are stated within Section 1168A of the zoning code, and staff was able to make findings for the required performance standards, which were outlined within the staff report. So overview of the parking and access on-site. So there will be two accesses to the site. The main access will be a full access, which will be located in the northeast corner of the site, which you can see located on the site plan on the right-hand side of this slide. The second access will be a right-in, right-out, and located in the southwestern area of the site. West of the principal structure is Akron Avenue. So that main access will have access from the private road adjacent from Lifetime Fitness. The parking stalls are shown to be located in the northern and eastern areas of the site. And then there are also pedestrian sidewalks shown around three sides of the proposed building. You can see on the northern side, the eastern side, and also the southern side, and then a bit along the western side where the patio area is on that main level. There are also existing pedestrian walks along the east side of the private driveway adjacent to Lifetime Fitness, and then also pedestrian walks along Akron Avenue. Little overview of the parking requirements. So for this type of use, there is one stall per four persons of maximum capacity required. So in the submitted plans, it does show that the site plan has a total of 154 parking stalls, which is a shortfall of seven stalls as the requirement is 161 stalls. Staff does not see this shortfall as an issue, as there are potential opportunities for cross-parking with surrounding commercial development. For instance, future commercial development to the north, and then potentially some cross-traffic, cross-parking with Lifetime Fitness to the east. The applicant is requesting a minor amendment to the Preswick Place Planning and Development Agreement to allow for the deficit of seven parking stalls on-site, which staff is supportive of. Just to mention, minor amendments to PUDs are the sole purview of the City Council, but staff is recommending that the Planning Commission include the approval of a minor amendment to the Preswick Place PUD Agreement as a condition with their, with the final site and building plan in front of them today. Overview of the landscaping, that's proposed. So the applicant's landscape plan does show a total of 38 trees on-site, and then also 90 foundation plantings. The city code does require one tree per 3,000 square feet of site area, which for this site is 38 trees. So the landscape plan is meeting that requirement. The city code also requires foundation plantings in the amount based on total linear feet of the building perimeter, and then based on the size of the building, a total of 43 plantings are required. So they are exceeding that minimum requirement. The code does require parking lot landscaping, which the landscape plan does show to meet those requirements as well. Mentioned in the staff report, there is a 30-foot Metropolitan Council Sanitary Sewer and Utility Easement area along the western property boundary, which you can see is west of the proposed principal structure. There are a number of trees shown in that area, and that needs, those will need to be moved as they're not allowed to be located within the sanitary easement area. So the applicant will be required to work with city staff to adjust the placement of those trees. And an updated landscape plan will need to be resubmitted to the city for approval. This is also included as a condition of approval with the recommended action. So parks and open space. So the proposed development was reviewed by the city's park and recreation department in conformance with the city's adopted master plan. Since no parks were identified to be constructed in this area, staff is recommending to collect cash in lieu of park dedication, which that total is $23,400. Staff is also recommending that the developer considers adding a... Staff is also recommending that the developer considers adding additional pedestrian access along the south side of the property. So, the photometric plan was also submitted. There will be a combination of wall and pole-mounted lightings throughout the site. The plans did not show the maximum height of the proposed pole lights, so a condition of approval will be that they cannot exceed 30 feet in height, as no residential properties are surrounding this, so 30 feet is the maximum for that. A little overview of the architectural elevation. So, the zoning ordinance requires at least 50% of the building to be finished with brick or stone, and then no more than 10% EPIS. So, the applicant is requesting a minor amendment to the Preswick Place PUD for the ability to include up to 31% EPIS, and to allow for the building to consist of less than 50% brick or stone. The applicant's plans do show that the building will consist of brick, CMUs, and glass, as well as EPIS. The plans also show that the bottom 10 feet of the building will consist of the brick and CMUs. You can see one of the elevations to the left. And the top of the building will contain EPIS and glass placed throughout the building. So, a main component for the need for the additional EPIS on top is more structural, for structural purposes, as they would need to add an additional column on the main floor to allow for the weight, if it was to be brick. So, that's the main reason why for the additional EPIS on that second floor. Here are a couple other architectural elevations. So, this on the top part will be facing Akron Avenue, so that will be the rear part of the building, and then also down here will be the south part. They did submit a couple floor plans, which you can see on the upper-hand, left-hand side. That will be the main level, which you can see a bar area on the left-hand side, and then also additional seating, as well as a patio area north of the bar area. And then, the other floor plan on the right-hand side will be on the second floor, which shows the outdoor patio area, and as well as additional indoor seating area on the second level. Then here are a couple images from the existing copper pint site. The proposed building will have a different look overall, but somewhat similar with that, that second-floor patio area, but the exterior materials will be a bit different than what is existing, in the existing copper pint. So, there is a motion from the planning commission today. So, there is a motion to approve the planning development final site and building plan to allow for the construction of a 10,000-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining areas on Lot 1, Block 1, Preswick Place 27th Edition, subject to conditions 1 through 10, which are shown in front of you on this slide. I can take any questions the commission may, may have. I do know the applicant, as well as their representatives, are present as well to answer any additional questions that you have.
Thank you, Julia. Just, just one question for me. I think I've got some for the applicant, but on the landscape plan, I understand that the easement's on the west side there, and we've got a condition that you'll have, they'll have to rework that landscape plan. Would that easement prevent plantings as well, or is it just really like trees?
Yeah, no plantings as well. No structures, landscaping, anything is allowed to be within that 30-foot easement area, as it is a Metropolitan Council utility area, so it's not even the city's, so we can't allow for any additional landscaping within that area.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions?
On the lighting question and the height?
Yep.
How is that impacted by, I assume we're gonna have lights on the second floor, and I assume that's probably more than 20 feet high. I just, I don't understand how the, how the city code works with that.
Yeah, so the 30 foot's more for pole, for pole-mounted, it's not wall.
We can have lights there, so they can, people can read their menus.
Correct. Yes.
There was a, there's a pretty large deviation on the 10% versus 31% of EPIS. Did you, can you go over that again, of the, what the rationale was behind that, or maybe that's a question more for, for, for the owner?
The applicant.
Yeah, the applicant.
Yeah, I can add a little bit, but I would also refer to the applicant, why their need is there for the additional EPIS. So, the main part, you can kind of see, so there are, due to structural issues, because there is a large overhang with that second-floor patio, and as well as large glass areas, EPIS allows for that to, it's not as heavy as brick. So, on that main floor, they'd have to have additional columns to be able to hold up structurally that brick. So, that's the main reasoning why the applicant stated why they need that additional EPIS as well. Again, they can probably add on more so why they need that structurally, so.
Just one question on my end. So, with the parking, you mentioned that they can spill over into like the Lifetime parking lot. I'm assuming there's no issues from Lifetime on, on people parking there and going to this?
Staff more saw that cross-parking being more with the development to the north, as that will be additional commercial parking in the future. I know I did receive a call from Lifetime today in regards to potentially some parking. That could be something that they look into, into the future. I did mention that to them, but staff was more seeing that commercial cross-traffic with that to the north more so.
Once that gets developed.
Correct.
Just to tap on it, I was gonna wait for the applicant, but I mean, I had the same kind of thought, so. But the way I was thinking about it is, assuming that's all approved and shared, then that implies that we may have pedestrians walking from the Lifetime parking lot over to the restaurant. And so, I just want to make sure we've got the appropriate walkways and, and road markings for crossing and that sort of thing.
What is the sidewalks on that?
Yeah, there are sidewalks existing on, I believe, the west side, or along this private drive that's in between Lifetime and the proposed parcel. But again, I, the applicant can kind of speak a little further on what they see with that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will also open up for audience to come forward with any questions or comments. I ask the same thing, that you state your full name and address, try and keep it to about three minutes, and then if you've already heard the comment or question, you can just go with, go with that, having been lodged. Any would like to come forward? If the applicant's here, maybe it's a good place to start. Is the applicant here tonight? Oh.
Good evening. Corey Bannerman, 5511 Southwood Drive, Bloomington.
Thank you. Well, I'll start off. So, the question was about, there's a condition to allow less parking, right? With the assumption that people can use other parking areas, which I like that idea, but we also want to make sure that it's safe for, for people to do that. So, how, how do you see, and what is the pedestrian flow, say, from your restaurant to the Lifetime parking lot, are there crosswalks? How is that gonna work?
I'm not sure where they are. And I don't have a pointer with this, but I don't know where they are coming from Lifetime. I mean, there's natural sidewalks in place already, right?
You can kind of see.
Yeah. So, there is an existing sidewalk on the west side of, of that road, which is the, what is that road? The, the current access road that gets into Lifetime, there is an existing sidewalk there, and on the east-west road, there's an existing sidewalk there. But I'm not sure where the crosswalks are going over to Lifetime. I'm not familiar with where they are.
I think maybe your partner wanted to help in the back there. Come on up.
Yeah, yeah.
Save me.
Alan Ketchbull with Kimley Horn Engineering. We worked with the Lifetime Development also. So, yeah, all the sidewalks are on the south side of that road. There's crosswalks from the Lifetime parking lot, goes south to the sidewalk, and then they can meander west, and then cross on the west side of the roundabout, which would bring you right into the southeast corner of this parking lot.
Okay, is there a crosswalk there, the west side of the roundabout?
There is, currently, crosswalks.
Excellent, all right, thank you.
Yeah, just right there.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions for the applicant?
I was just curious where the other location is, so in case we want to go take a look at it.
There's another copper pint in Shakopee, 1710 Crossings Boulevard. And I've got some other sites too, but that's closest.
All right, thanks.
And can you speak to the EPIS and the, the building materials?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Can you speak to the EPIS and the building materials, and why we have, why we're asked to make that change?
So, we have a column right in the middle of our lower level, and that will support the north-south wall structure on the second story, as well as the east-west wall structure on the north side of the bar area on the second floor. And if I get to that plan, how do I get to the floor?
You can arrow back and forth, yeah.
Okay. So, you can see, if you look at the bar area on the main floor, just to the east or right side of that, you can see a rectangle in there. That's where there's an existing column. That column is supporting the walls on the second floor. If we have brick or stone on that second floor, the weight will be excessive to require additional columns in that area. I was hoping to get by without any columns at all, but from an engineering standpoint, it was a little bit too much to take on. So, that's the, the need and the hopes in not needing a second column in that area.
Any follow-ups on that?
Well, I guess my comment, I, my thought is, I mean, the, the city standards are there for a reason. You're, we're asking for quite a big deviation of, you know, 300% more. If there's, I understand that the desire to keep a singular column, if there is a workable layout, and you'd have to work with your engineers, I'd, I'd ask you to consider that, to see if there's an opportunity to be able to structurally support some other materials up on that second floor that would reduce that EPIS amount.
We can go back and readdress it again.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicants? All right, thank you. Any other questions from the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Rivera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Did, do we have any comments outside of the audience today, letters or anything?
No, we did not receive any additional public comment for this item.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners on this item?
I just think, another comment of another addition to the community, a nice addition. This was always kind of earmarked for commercial use, so I think the city of Rosemount has been a long time coming to have some other things and options for the city, so that we can spend our dollars here, instead of going to Eagan or Apple Valley. So, I think it's a really nice addition, and it's nice in vicinity to Lifetime, so, you know, you can go play pickleball, and then you can go maybe, you know, go up to the rooftop. So, I think it's a really good partnership with the community, and, and I think it's gonna be a good deal.
Agree. Really excited about this, yeah.
Yep.
Cool. I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the planned unit development final site and building plan to allow for the construction of a 10,000-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining areas on Lot 1, Block 1, Preswick, Preswick Place, 27th Edition, subject to conditions 1 through 10.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bednar, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. All right, thank you. It's really exciting, yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment to the Rosemount Comprehensive Guide Land Use Map. Anthony?
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, Chair Reed. This is a request that is being brought before the planning commission to consider a comprehensive land use plan amendment that would re-guide approximately 420 acres in the area near the eastern boundary of the city, from a combination of agriculture, community commercial, and high-medium-low-density residential to business park, as well as expanding the MUSA Metropolitan Urban Services Area into that site. As I said, it's located on the eastern part of the city. It's 420 acres in area, and between Emory and Fisher Avenues. Fisher Avenue being the eastern municipal boundary of the city of Rosemount. And then, it is bound on the north by Highway 55 and County Road 42, and on the south, it is, the southern boundary of the site aligns with 150th Street. Zooming in a little bit further, so you can see the existing conditions on the site. The site is currently being used for agricultural purposes, as well as a mineral extraction operation on the eastern portion of the subject property. Also note that this site is comprised of severen, seven parcels owned by two property owners. The land in the northeast corner is excerpted from this request. The, one of the property owners does own that piece of land, but they are holding that for future plans. So, just zooming in a little bit further, so you can get a little even closer understanding of that site, you can see an existing irrigation system located there, and then the mineral extraction operation on the east. Here's County Road, or Highway 55, which curves north towards 52, and here is County Road 42, which heads west to Highway 52, and further into the city of Rosemount. Emory Avenue and Fisher Avenues are on either side of the subject property. So, for a little bit of context, as I said, the request is to re-guide the site from a business park to, or from commercial, community commercial, high-medium-low residential, and the existing agricultural designation to business park. As I said, the site is located in this far eastern corner edge of the city here. The, the proposed amendment would also expand the MUSA to bring urban services of sewer and water into that site. A little background on the development process. The, the proposed land use amendment is just the first step in the approval process. There's also an environmental review that has been ongoing. The AUAR was recently published. The public comment period did close. The city received comments from four agencies. Those will be incorporated into the AUAR before the council reviews and accepts that document. Additional public review includes plating the site into buildable lots for development, PUD agreements, and rezoning into conformance with the comprehensive plan if the amendment is approved, and then final site and building plans. These are all required for any development on the site, not just for the anticipated development scenario within the AUAR of a data center. If the site is developed out of sequence, which is a possibility, the city would be negotiating development agreements with the developer of the site. And when I say developed out of sequence, I mean basically leapfrogging vacant land to areas that are currently unserved. So, those development agreements would identify the responsibilities of the city and the developer as far as providing services to that site. These are something that are part of every development, but even more important in a case such as this. So, the proposed amendment, the table on the slide before you shows the breakdown of the existing land use designations on there. The, as I said, there's also a, a expansion of the MUSA to encompass the site as well. I would also say that the area that is guided for agricultural uses is guided for that in the 2040 comp plan. The ultimate anticipated buildout of the city would have that agricultural land developed in some way. And that is all just to say that the city has been planning services, or planning the overall system to also serve this eastern portion of the city as well. Touch base a little bit on the business park designation of the comprehensive plan. That, the business park land use are intended for employment centers. Business park varies from the light industrial land use designation, in that it is fewer impacts, less outdoor storage, lower intensity uses. Essentially, everything, establishments or businesses located in a business park district are intended to have little or no outdoor storage, with the majority of the activity occurring completely inside the building. Typical uses shown there are office warehouses, research facilities, post-secondary education, distribution, manufacturing. This isn't an exhaustive list, but there is some overlap with the life, light industrial land use as well. And then, lastly, the location, the comp plan specifies that locations of business And then lastly, the location, the comp plan specifies that locations of business parks should be greater than 150 acres. That's just understanding that the types of businesses generally are larger in size. And then they should be located on the heavily traveled arterial roads within the city. There is some support in the comprehensive plan for the re-guiding of this site into the business park land use designation. The comprehensive plan contains 10 guiding principles, two of which identify increasing diversity of development in the city and encouraging more high-quality tax base generating, generating business park development specifically in the northeast part of the city. That land use section also contains some goals, such as providing land uses that create a diversified economy, as well as a trended transition between uses of differing intensity, such as the high, high, heavy industrial along Highway 55 and the waste management land use district containing SKBs landfill just west of this site. Chapter six relates to economic competitiveness, calls out a need to limit the expansion of heavy industrial and rely on business park development to add employment and tax base and, and really no longer relying on the heavy industrial or allowing expansion of heavy industrial beyond its already zoned and guided areas. And then lastly, I think you, you may identify a theme. The resilience chapter also calls out diversity in the tax base to avoid over-reliance on one development type, to work with large landowners to entice business park development to the city. In addition to the comprehensive plan itself, the city council has adopted a strategic plan. Some of the goals are for growing and enhancing Rosemont and identifying business park development as a way to showcase a varied and resilient economy. Beyond the comprehensive plan support for this, staff does identify that a future realignment of Highway 55 and County Road 42 would shift focus of development from that 42-55 intersection more westward to Emory Avenue. The existing 42-55 intersection will not be a potential node with that realignment. Staff would note that the timing and final design haven't been determined, but it's likely to, to occur in the early or to mid 2030s. Just to explain how that's going to look, the 55 will actually be combined with County Road 42 at this point, swooped down, and then connect with 52 here as the major intersection. This County Road, or Courthouse Boulevard, which is currently 55, will be revert to a local road, and then this will no longer be a major intersection in the city, and Emory Avenue will take over that eastern title of the eastern node for future development. MinDOT's scenario provided on their website shows this a little bit clearer. You can see 42 and 55 be combined into a single road, expanded and improved to a four-lane. Ultimately, with Courthouse Boulevard reverting to a local road, the connection to 55, or between 55 and 52 will go away, and all traffic coming from Hastings would go to this intersection, or this interchange, which would likely ultimately be built out as a clover. That is all to say again that this part of the city, the development in this area near Fahy Avenue is really going to shift further west from its, what had been anticipated as kind of the, the easternmost commercial node in the city. As I said, the city has been planning on serving this area with municipal services for, for, for a number of years now. This isn't an adopted plan, but it is a concept and planning tool that the city has used for systems planning. This is to show that the agricultural land in the far eastern portion of the city will ultimately be developed for some use, and that the city's plans have always been to serve this area, and that it was not intended to be in agriculture in perpetuity. So to provide the commission a little bit of an understanding of how comprehensive land use plan amendments are made, in addition to the public hearing before the Planning Commission, the city council would review the recommendation made by the Planning Commission this evening, and then they would act on that request, either approving or denying the amendment. Notifications are sent out to all adjacent and affected jurisdictions. That means all cities that abut Rosemont, as well as any jurisdictions such as the Vermillion Watershed Joint Powers Associate Organization, school districts, the MinDOT, the DNR, they all receive notice of this comprehensive plan amendment. They have, there's a 60-day period in which the city receives comments, and those are compiled and then submitted to the Met Council along with the proposed amendment and staff reports. From then, the Met Council would review the, the proposed amendment and, and any comments received, but it can only be placed into the city's comprehensive plan until following Met Council's approval of the amendment. So staff is recommending approval of this request to re-guide the site based on the support for this within the city's existing comprehensive plan, as well as the strategic plans of the city council. There's ongoing contextual basis for this as well, as I said, MinDOT's realignment of 42 and 55. Therefore, as I said, staff is recommending approval of this request. I can take any questions that the commission may have. Comprehensive plan amendments are very legislative in nature. You're not reviewing this request against a city code for setbacks and lot coverage and things like that, but more trying to identify the, and weigh the pros and cons of the proposed amendment. So, that being said, I can take any questions. I know there's representatives here for the applicant who has applied for this amendment who could speak to any further questions as well.
Thank you, Anthony. Would you mind pulling up the current guided view against the proposed guided view? One thing I just want to call out too, except that was important here, is the northwest there, that's, that's waste management, right? There's a large, is it SKB?
Yeah, the, the black is SKB. Staff would also note that somewhat recently, 42 acres was re-guided from business park to waste management to accommodate an expansion of that, which is reflected in the map before you as well, but that is only to note that there has been somewhat of a reduction in business park guided land in that area.
Okay. I guess one of the things I did like is that this does provide a nice buffer, being business park. I, I think the residential aspect being close to waste management is unlikely, and this really is a good transition view to have this, this guided for a business park. So the, and just the question I have is, I'm trying to remember for the community commercial, the red, what kind of businesses are typically in that kind of a zone?
So community commercial would be businesses that you would typically find at Akron and 42, along 42 on the south side, where we see our grocery stores and our fast food chains and restaurants and things like that. One thing that I would note is that, given how the land has been developing, this certain, this amount of, of community commercial is probably a lot higher than what would be needed or expected to develop in this area. Commercial requires a kind of full pie of residential or business people, patrons and customer base to come visit it, and with the industrial to the north, Nininger to the east, which will likely remain rural in nature, it's not likely to be enough homes and residents in the vicinity to support that many acres of community commercial. But that red is really those commercial areas throughout the community that serve the people who live here.
So this still allows for like, like a, a gas station, convenience store?
Correct.
Right, okay, which seems like a better fit than a, a large area for, for that.
And, and I would show also the entire comp plan, just to reiterate how I was saying that the amount of acres provided for community commercial in that area are likely much more than what is needed, given how we've seen development occurring in these other areas. And there's probably as much acres of community commercial over here as the entire rest of the city, so it is probably too big and the city would have been looking at rightsizing that with the next comp plan update anyways.
I've got one more question, and I'll open it for the other commissioners. The AUAR process is very, very detailed and lengthy. I mean, I did look over the AUAR some, it's like 400 some pages long, comprehensive, it gets into a lot of different things. Any initial findings on that, you know, impacts that we should be aware of that might come up on this?
So the AUAR is still in process. I will note that the Met Council won't accept any applications for a site that's still undergoing its AUAR review. The comments that have been received, as I said, we've only received four, for this AUAR since it was published, have been pretty consistent with what we receive for almost every AUAR. There's wildlife that must be taken into account, trees can't be cleared in certain periods of time. There are comments about water, water provision. The Met Council wants to be able to handle the sewer water or wastewater that's created by the site. There isn't anything unexpected about any of it, and really what the AUAR does is it identifies potential impacts and then how those impacts could be mitigated. So some of them are as simple as the Met Council saying, well, a comp plan amendment would be required when the mitigation measure would be, well, the comp plan amendment being approved. That's just extremely high-level example, but the AUAR, what it does is it lays out potential impacts and identifies mitigations for those, but no real surprises so far.
Okay. And then, I guess, one more last question. With the traffic study that's underway, which is, it's being led by Dakota County for 42-55?
MinDOT.
MinDOT, okay. So they're, they're aware of this, and they would take into account any proposed changes in terms of traffic volumes, things like that?
Right, right, and the applicant has been in contact with MinDOT, also would really trying to identify what the, the needs would be for right-of-way, and that's something that will come up through the plating process, where that right-of-way would be acquired by MinDOT or the city in, in any development for roads. But there has been back and forth going for that.
Thank you, Anthony. Other questions from the commissioners?
I just have a quick comment to make. Let's say this motion is approved. Whatever community commercial land will be left, it's still far more, it's bigger than the one we have around, in and around Akron, and looking at the plan, we probably won't even have that much development in that area. That footprint should be still good enough.
Good observation, thank you.
I have a question, Anthony. The slide right before the, the motion, where it kind of talks about the different levels of approval process. So this is the only public hearing tonight for this, is that?
For, for the comp plan amendment.
For the comp plan amendment, but it's still, like, you know, there's several other, I guess, approvals for this to go through.
Right, there would be plating, plating of the site into buildable lots, rezoning the site into conformance with the comp plan if it is, if the amendment is approved, a planned unit development, final site and building plans would all be public hearings for those as well.
So we could see this again come through different times?
Yeah, yeah, and I think what we've seen, not just in this request, but elsewhere, that because the land use plan amendment is, there is such wide discretion for cities whether or not to approve such a request, that developers try to at least get this hurdle out of the way before dedicating a lot of resources into putting together site plans and, and all sorts of civil design and things like that, so.
Okay.
But we do sometimes see these requests with all of the other approvals at once, but this, in this case, the only request before you is the comp plan amendment tonight.
Got it, thank you.
Just one question on mine, so just kind of looking at it from a satellite view, and does this have like a small mineral mining on it?
It does have one small mineral extraction operation occurring on that site. The operator of that mine is the owner of that land that is part of this request.
Okay, and so if this changes, then eventually that gets phased out, obviously, then?
Right, right, and then the reclamation that's usually involved with mineral extraction operation would be done through this, the mass grading of the site for future development.
Okay.
Other questions?
No, sir.
No. All right, so at this time, we will open it up for the public hearing. I know, before we move to having folks come up, I know we had one written letter, so we'll make sure we covered the points on that as part of our response to the public comments. What we'd like you to do is if you'd like to come up, state your, your full name, your full address, street address and city, and we'd like to keep the comments to three minutes or under. And lastly, if you've already heard the comment made, you know, you can, you can bypass. After all the comments are done, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll come back and we'll make sure we go through all those answers to address them. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Steen. My address is 8300 Norman Center Drive. I'm with the Larkin Hoffman Law Firm, and I represent the applicant. Want to first just say thank you to staff for the hard work. This is not an uncomplicated project, and as Commissioner Rivera said, this is at the beginning of the project, so it's still fairly early days. As staff noted, we are seeking two applications, or two requests as part of this application tonight, amendments to your comprehensive plan. The first is to re-guide this property with the business park designation, and the second is the MUSA line adjustment. As the staff presentation noted, this project is both supportive of and supported by several policies and principles in your comprehensive plan. As noted, excuse me, chapter six of your comprehensive plan, which is the economic competitiveness, and chapter seven, which is resiliency, both are very supportive of a diverse and high-quality economic tax base. So this is very supportive of that policy. And chapter three, which is your land use policy, contains a number of guidance and policies that, that talk about diversified economy and balanced growth. And this project will really serve as a catalyst for growth in this part of the city. And you heard some of the ways that it's going to happen. First and foremost, transportation. We're actively working with the city, with the county and MinDOT to identify the right-of-way needs for long-term development here, and those will be dedicated as part of this project. We're also looking at some pretty substantial water main extensions. Those are going to come down 42, along with a, a very substantial sewer main extension. I think that's a little bit over a mile. And what those are going to do is really serve as a catalyst, not just for this site, but for those properties to the west of this site, and really bring that economic development. And then lastly, of course, there's jobs and economic growth. In addition to the tax base, which is pretty substantial, there is also anticipated 420 full-time jobs in this data center at full buildup, but even more important than that, there will be estimated at least 2,000 highly skilled trades jobs that will, that will serve this site for the five to 10 years of the buildup. So in terms of what's next, this is early days. There will be many more opportunities before the Planning Commission and the city council. We're waiting for the AUAR to, to be adopted by the city council. We're asking that this would be contingent on that AUAR, as you heard from staff. But then there would be a replat, a rezone, and a planned unit development application, and those would likely come in June or July. And that's really where we start to talk about the framework for what's going to go on this site, where we talk about the specifics, the height, the setbacks, the building design, and all of those mitigation items that have come up in the AUAR. And those will then be documented, not just in your planned unit development, but in a development contract that is binding on the developer. And then lastly, you'll see a final site and building plan like you saw earlier on the earlier item tonight, and that's where the rubber hits the road, where we look at that framework and we apply it to the end user. And that's, that's where you're going to be looking at the project specifics, the actual setbacks being used, the technology being used, which is rapidly advancing, and you'll have other things like a noise study, light study, and all of those would all be before you at that time. So again, there's a lot of opportunity. We're, we're fairly early days in this process, but we, we appreciate staff's efforts to continue to work with us, and we hope that we can get your support as we move forward.
Thank you. Just, just one question. I, it's, I mean, it's premature to get into any of those specifics, right? But I know when we did- those specifics, right? But I know when we did, if, if this were to move forward with the data center, we had a pretty rigorous review with our other partner here in Rosemounts. And they had Excel Energy here. They had the Mets here. They had water usage utilities people here. They talked about the noise, and they really kind of thoroughly scientifically went through all that. Would we expect the same kind of approach?
Exactly. Very much so. And again, you know, at, at that time, we'll, we'll really dive into the framework at the rezoning, the PUD stage. But then, that final site and building stage, that's where we look at the specific water usage based on the specific technology, right? The specific setbacks, the specific power, the noise mitigation study, which we would assume will be part of that, that process.
Thank you. Other questions from the commissioners for the applicant, potential applicant? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others who wish to come forward?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Dimick. I live at one-five-zero-zero-one Fisher Avenue. We're kind of a pocket of seven properties out on, would be the southeast corner of this property adjacent to...
Just east of the property, right?
Yeah. Well, right, so, right at the end of Fisher Avenue, Fisher Avenue and One-Hundred-and-Fiftieth Street.
Okay.
So, I've got an idea of where that is. So, what I want to start out with is during the twenty-twenty-five State of the City address, our mayor made this comment. "One of the most unseen but critical important stories of Rosemount's growth is our historic agricultural roots. From Fleagle's Grain Elevator visible, prominent in downtown Rosemount since nineteen-twenty-seven, to the agricultural production research that's taken place in the fields of U-More Park since the nineteen-fifties, to many acres of active farms that remain in the city of Rosemount today, this community was built on agriculture." He presented Tom Fahey with the key to the city for his family farm that's been here for a hundred and fifty-one years. He commented that Tom's dedication exemplifies this delicate balance we must strike between growth and tradition. "This story is a reminder that while we move towards the future, we must honor our past. Reinvestment and long commitment creates the connection between our history and our future." And I think that's something we need to keep in mind, how much farmland does Rosemount have. But yet, it's our history, and we need to preserve it. But now, we're going to take the eastern edge of our city and put a data center in there and eat up all that farmland. And it, right here, our mayor is saying, we shouldn't do that. We should preserve our farmland. We shouldn't be eating it up. And we should have a balance between agriculture and growth. And so, I think it's really important that Dakota County Twenty-Forty Comprehensive Plan guides the county's housing, transportation, county facility, parks, land use. And in their plan, they talk about this. The communities, the communities with the emerging suburban edge classification include areas managing rapid growth and change. These areas have significant amounts of land for future development. Primary concerns in suburban edge communities include protecting water supplies and preserving open space. Our Rosemount Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation agriculture, intended to preserve land where agricultural uses are currently occurring. Rural residential, not connected to urban services, as well as to create an urban reserve for such time when there is a need for additional urban development and urban services may be extended. Urban services is a data center, urban services. You know, now, we allowed Meta to come into our city. They're building it now. We have no idea the issues that that's going to bring. And it's pretty obvious with other states and these data centers going in, that's, there's big issues that need to be looked at before we decide that it's okay to let Tract come in and do what they want to do. We had the opportunity to, our seven, seven parcels, had the opportunity to visit with Tract last week. They did a presentation for us. And Kristin Dean, awesome person, she's been very open with me since last November. I spoke with Anthony at the city for a long time. He's been very open with me on what's going on. And to give you an idea, Tract is a company that goes in, they develop the roads, get the permits, do the zoning, and then they sell all that to the data center. So, we, at this point, we don't know what's going on that property, even if you allow them to go in, put in their roads and their lighting and get the zoning and their water appropriations. And we don't know that end user. So, why would we approve all of this to be done when in the end, we don't know what's going to happen? They don't know what's going to happen. They don't know who's going to purchase it from them. It could be them. They just created another part of their company called Fleet Services. Fleet Services is a data building part of their company, and it just came online in January. So, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of questions. And I want to, I know I'm taking a lot of time here, but fifty-three-point-four percent of the land considered is considered prime farmland on this parcel. Twenty-one-point-eight percent is considered farmland of statewide importance. That's a total of seventy-five-point-two percent of this land that is farmland that should be preserved, according to the state. So, I think we need to take that in consideration. Yet, we're willing to maybe sacrifice it for a data center? I'm not, you know, I'm one of the few who's going to get sacrificed for the many out here. We live in a quiet area, a quiet, quiet area of the city. We've been very lucky. I've been there for thirty-six years. My neighbors, some of my neighbors have been there longer. A lot of our intentions were to pass our properties down to our children because to find that in the area is impossible. People are looking for land to build on, and it's not out there. And now, we want to suck up four hundred and twenty-some acres for a data center. And I also want to, so, I want to also touch on, yeah, a lot to say, I'm sorry. But, so, the A U A R, I've been studying that. And there's a lot of inconsistencies in that. And one of the big ones is the water appropriation. The well on that property is appropriated for seventy-three-point-some million gallons of water a year. And they're saying that would be enough to supply the cooling water for that data center. That Rosemount would only have to supply fifty-thousand gallons a year for domestic water, which is toilet flushing, sinks, you know, the basic, basic domestic. Well, their numbers don't add up. If you look at, I'm sorry, hang on a second.
Yeah. If I could interrupt one, one second here. If there's going to be questions, Anthony, or on the A U A R, how would, how would those be handled? So, I don't...
So, the, the request tonight is about the comp plan amendment. I think we can take the comments related to the A U A R, and we can incorporate those into the A U A R itself. It hasn't been adopted yet.
Okay. If you could, if you, I could maybe summarize your questions, and we can...
Sure. Okay. So, what their, their water appropriations that they're saying what they need are not anywhere near what that data, data center is going to need for water.
Okay.
And the other thing, too, is you've got, we've got the refinery, which is the number-one water user in Dakota County, the state of Minnesota. Dakota County is the second-largest irrigation water user in the state. We've got spectral allies. We now have Meta, which we have no idea how much water they're going to use. Now, you're going to throw this data center in there. And I had a conversation with Dakota County today. When you start pulling a lot of water out of the same spot of an aquifer, you create cones. And cones lower the water level, dry up wells, which I have a well very close to this development that I'm very concerned about. And so, Elko New Market, they were going to have a bottling company come into their area. So, they did a test. They ran their wells at high capacity for a month to see what would happen. And the people's water turned brown and had manganese in it. We don't have any idea, like, this water thing is huge. We have no idea what it's going to do.
We can definitely, we can definitely speak to that point when we're getting to the...
Okay. But we do know that the data center is going to take a lot of water. Their discharge figures that they have in their A U R A don't even, so, a data center that uses water, forty percent of that water is discharged as wastewater.
So, we can, so we can address that, too. We can have, so you've got questions about discharge. We'll do that.
Okay.
If you could maybe summarize your final questions so we can get to other...
Is there, okay, is there, where is that, that I can file these questions, Anthony?
Just send them to me.
Okay. Okay. So, the other things that I want to talk about is, that hasn't been talked about is cooling towers and the pollution that they cause. I, I have this all written up, and I can send it to you people. But the A U R A is not direct. It's, it doesn't list all the wells in the area, and I addressed that with Anthony on the scoping document. It's missing wells. It, it doesn't, so, electrical supply, it doesn't really hit how much actually that's going to cause, what's going to happen there. And I have studies and studies on all this stuff. And I know I'm taking more than three minutes, but...
Right.
And the diesel generators, we haven't discussed diesel generators, the noise...
If, if...
Wildlife.
Thank you. If we can do is, we'll definitely make sure we talk about how those questions, those are great questions.
Okay. So, my, my thing is, is how can we decide to make a change to the comprehensive plan if we don't know how this change is going to affect us tonight? I mean, I, I would ask that we stay that decision until everybody knows exactly what this data center's about and what it's going to bring. And I guess I'll concede there. But I'd hope you guys would look harder into exactly what the truth is and what the data center's all about before you make that decision tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Janice Speltz, and I'm at one-four-nine-nine-seven Fisher Avenue.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
One-four-nine-nine-seven Fisher Avenue. I just want to mention that the south side of this proposed study site, that is not One-Hundred-and-Fiftieth Street. That is a private drive. And so, that we maintain that road. So, we will be, we will be right at the border of that property line. And when we met with Tract, they said that there would only be a fifty-foot buffer from our property line or from that drive. Just so, please take that into consideration. And just a quick comment. I know the vision of Rosemount is to expand. We want to get more development out in this area. But when you are coming from Hastings and going into Rosemount, what you're going to see is you're going to see a data center. You're going to see the refinery. You're going to see S K B. You're going to see a huge FedEx building. And then, you're going to see another data center. And I just want you to think about that vision when you're going into the city of Rosemount and how welcoming that vision is actually going to be. So, that's just my only comment. I also sent in a written comment today, so hopefully you guys have that.
Yes.
This is going to be a little different for me on this site. My name's John Bremer. I'm chairman of the Ninniger Township Planning Commission. I got a letter as an adjoining property owner. The township was not notified about this. I contacted board members, and they said, being that I am the adjoining landowner, I should be the one to come forward. We do have a few concerns. Kim addressed most of those already. But we also have some on a government level. One would be, depending on how this is developed, we do share with you guys Fisher Avenue. And I know I talked, I think it was Anthony, this morning about this. And he said that you guys would cover anything in regards to the upgrade on that road. But we also do have that mineral extraction site, and One-Hundred-and-Fiftieth Street is being affected by it. And I think it's something that we need to address with the city of Rosemount because we seem to be using an awful lot of gravel and an awful lot of grading on One-Hundred-and-Fiftieth Street to keep that road in straight, in shape. And it is because of the trucks running from that pit. So, I guess that's pretty much it. Like I say, other people covered pretty much anything else. But you're talking to another government official. If you guys got any questions from our end of it right now. And I guess, closing, going forward, I would appreciate if we be kept very much in the loop on this because we're right on top of it in the township. And also, you talked about running water and sewer into this site. I can tell you, I've been on our planning commission for forty-seven years, so this goes back a long ways. But this was considered by the Met Council or the Water and Sewer, whoever it was at the time, I don't remember, to be leapfrogging in development for water and sewer. The city of Hastings tried it on the township, and it was rejected. So, I think it's something you need to look into. I don't know, I wouldn't guarantee you can get water and sewer to this site at this time. So, that's what I have. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brandon Borden. I'm at one-four-nine-nine-one Fisher Avenue. So, I'll get to be right on the south side of the site looking forward at it. And I think, I think some of us actually look at some of these documents that are developed, be it how things are guided for land use, how they're guided in the comp plan, and they make some decisions based on what those documents say. And I get things can change. But I probably wouldn't spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on improvements to a barn because horses aren't real compatible with a data center. There are just things that, I get it, this isn't just a little bit of a swing. We're not going from, hey, fifty acres. We're going the whole, the whole shebang. And what the city will get long term is four hundred and twenty jobs, one per acre. So, that's great. I get there'll be plenty of lights, plenty of activity during construction, and there's jobs associated with that. And that's all part of the decision you all make because that's why you're part of the commission and later, you know, obviously, the council. So, I don't know. I think it's a little bit of the context. I think it was said, well, a little bit of what's your entry? What's your gateway? So, you're pretty much half of Rosemount. It's going to be a second data center, relatively industrial. I get it. It's, what is it, light industrial or a business park? But it's a data center. It's a little bit different. So, certainly not against development, not naive enough to think that things wouldn't develop. There's a bunch of egg there. I'd love people there. That would improve my property values. I'm not convinced as well. So, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kamen, and I married into one of the seven families...
I'm sorry, can you...
Uh, sorry.
Yes, do you have it?
One-four-nine-nine-five Fisher Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes. And the community that is in this small, tight-knit little area, we're all here today. And I just need you all to come from a place of, if this was coming next to your homes, would you want to look out your window and see the bright lights and hear the noise and lose the beautiful open space that this community has? And there are many fathers and mothers that have worked for thirty years on these lands, and they want to pass those houses down to their children, to my children. And that needs to be considered because we need to be a community. We can't just keep building and not keep what we've built as a community and have that space and have that place for family. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Johnson. I'm at one-four-seven-zero-zero-Furlong. I live right along Fisher on the Emerald Greens Golf Course. I own a chemical distribution company in Eagan, and I'm a D B E certified supplier with MINDOT also. I work in industry. I support growth. This doesn't feel like balanced growth to me. It feels like it's, it's overreach. Let's be honest, Rosemount's already maxed out. You've got a refinery, chemical plants, landfill, heavy truck corridors, and already a data center. You're not building a community. I believe you're stacking hazards and destroying our ag. There are a lot of cities that have, have done these, just overreaching industrial, industrialization. Gary, Indiana is one of them. They did that on steel. When that collapsed, so did the city abandon homes, rising crime, and total economic decay. Cicero, Illinois, built around logistics and rail property values lagged for decades and is still fighting the stigma of crime and pollution. and is still fighting the stigma of crime and pollution. They're different situations, but a common thread, and these cities failed to prioritize the citizens. When you stop building places for people to live, grow and thrive, lose the very foundation of your economy. Homes near industrial zones appreciate 40% slower than homes in residential, residential homes. Data centers bring very few jobs, but they introduce 24/7 noise, heat islands, truck traffic, higher crime tied to off-hour activities and infrastructure gaps. I'm not here to fight progress, I am progress as a woman-owned DBE business, I believe in progress, but I don't believe that Rosemount needs another one. This kind of development quietly erodes cities from the inside out and you won't see the fallout today, but in five years, when values stall and families leave, like my family and these families, you'll have the chance, you'll see, it'll be too late. And that, but today you have the chance to leave a vision and not volume and don't trade away Rosemount's future for another server farm. I'd also like to add that I already have water issues, I've already hit the bottom of my well, so I'm going to have to drill. The golf course also uses an enormous amount of water, so the water table is already maxed. Also, I, I don't think those pictures do a really good job of showing how beautiful this land is. I would love to show you my backyard and my view, if you don't mind. I know we all see it, but if you could bear with me and just take a look at what we'd be giving up here. I wish I could have put it on the, of course it's not coming. Here we go. This is my view, this is why I live there and I love, I love this space. And if any of you play golf on Emerald Greens are familiar with this view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maddie Gunnis, my address is 14710 Furlong Circle. I am also a neighbor to Melissa Johnson and live on the golf course. It's a very beautiful area. The reason that we moved to the house that we're in is for the, the views and the agriculture and not having businesses and stuff close by. We like living close to everything but having, you know, peace and we want to bring that to our children and all of us neighbors, we're just a very tight-knit little community. We love our area and this data center would just ruin everything we have. Like Melissa said, everything out there is just peaceful, this data center is going to ruin our water table. Another thing is I worry about like radiation and things coming off of the data center and as well as like our property values, what is it going to do to our homes? We have, you know, over half a million dollar homes and what, what is that going to do for our property in the future? So I just want that to be considered as well. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Peter Johnson, 14700 Furlong Circle. I am currently 44 years old, I have lived in Rosemount for 41 of those years. The other three years that I did not live in Rosemount, I was active duty in the Army. I purposely moved back to Rosemount because of the community, my kids actively go to Rosemount, I'm a graduate from Rosemount. And I think the proposed plans that you guys witnessed tonight are dramatically wrong and don't actually understand the benef, or sorry, the downsides to what you guys are seeing. One of the biggest things for the, the traffic control that you guys were talking about earlier, that was just only at the intersection of 42 and 55. What it did not take into consideration is all of us along Fisher and any of the traffic control change along Fisher and on the houses on the north side of Fisher. My daughter takes a school bus on that road every single day, as I'm sure a lot of these, a lot of these kids do as well. You're going to have a double lane road coming out of 42 to getting onto 55, doubling the amount of traffic, not just during construction but afterwards, and there is zero turn lane on 55 headed west to get onto 55, or sorry, onto Fisher, and there is a multiple accidents that we've seen along the Emerald Greens Golf Course. The consideration that you saw proposed tonight is dramatically wrong, trying to take a left to head west onto 55 in the morning during rush hour traffic can be a 10 to 15 minute task currently, that does not consider the traffic impacts that are there. I definitely want to make sure that you guys understand that traffic study that you guys are being privy to was not the intersection that's going to be affected the most. And our kids travel these, we travel these every single day, and you've already heard about the water and the pollution and the property values, but I, guys, I need you to understand where we're coming from, from a safety standpoint, and I also want to make sure that you guys know that Fisher Avenue was almost annexed to Rosemount multiple years ago, to the point where Mr. Brammer brought up the fact that who's going to be in control of that road and what type of tax is going to be put on that road and where is it going to go to our other citizens that are going to be technically not a Rosemount citizen? We are technically a Nanniger Hastings Rose, or a address and we shouldn't be affected by that. I also want to make sure that when we talk about the water and the sewer that's going to be brought east from Rosemount out to this property, will not be going to our properties. We will still be on wells, we'll still be on sewers, but we will be negatively affected by the water and the sewage that will be affected as well. So you talk about a big impact about bringing it to this property, what you're talking about a community that's actually going to be affected by that and not benefit at all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Kamen. I've lived at 14995 Fisher Avenue since the day I was born. I will be inheriting this home and I plan to live there for the next 30 years. I don't want to leave Rosemount, I like Rosemount, Rosemount has a very special culture, it has an identity, and it has a very close-knit community as we've seen portrayed here today. I think the greatest strength that Rosemount has is the community and its culture and its people. But you guys are trying to lean into business, which is not Rosemount's strength and it's not who we are as a city. I think you will be leaning against your greatest strength, which is the community, the culture and the identity of this town, and you will make it something that it's not. And I think you'll end up hurting it rather than benefiting from it. As a resident, I don't hear any benefits from this plan other than noise pollution, light pollution. My son goes to the bus stop, which is at the corner of Rosemont, or of Fisher Avenue and 150th, and there's, there's no benefit. The greatest strength we have is community, you talk about housing, I'm okay with that just because growing the community, put in some parks and rec, we get high-speed internet, that could be a cool idea, but the data center or business park, I know that goes against some of the other values of the other residents, I'm just sharing my own, no offense to theirs. That's what I have to say, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Russell Belt, I live at 14997 Fisher Avenue. There's also some things to consider too with the, the grade and the slope of the land that's there now. In the springtime, all the snow that melts gets funneled down to our driveway and then it washes our driveway out. I, I've contacted the city a few times to see if you guys would help us replace our culvert on our private road, and they told us that it was our, our problem. But the water is coming from all the farmlands around, so I don't, I don't understand why that's necessarily our problem. When they, when, if you were to go look at this site, from the top of the hill where the ag mine is to where our driveway is, the elevation change is probably 50 feet, give or take, to, to build what they want to build, you would either have to raise the level next to our road up or somehow drop it down from 55, which would then entail slope it more towards our road, which would wash it out more. I mean, some of these people have videos where the waters rushed our, really taken our driveway out where we've had to bring in one-in steel plates to bridge the, the gap where the water's taken out our driveways. If you guys, you, I don't know why you guys weren't at the Tract meeting last week because you guys would know all about what they're going to build, and they're pretty set in stone on what they're building, and they, they're, they're insinuating that this is already happening. They didn't say that, but by the way that they were speaking, they're insinuating that this is already set in stone and a go, where they have their 40-acre pond set, where they have their, their berm set and where, he said his kid goes, gets picked up from his school, that's going to be an entrance to that place. So now you're going to have an entrance to the data center where our kids get picked up at the bus stop. There's this, that's a safety hazard right there. I know there's only like five kids there, but five kids' lives are worth more than a data center. With the added traffic that's going to be on Fisher, it's just, it's not, it's not a feasible thing. And like other people said, I'm for growth. When we bought here in, in 2020, I seen the comprehensive plan that you, that was in place. The comprehensive plan that was in place was light industry and some residential, that's going to raise the value of our houses. There's not one study in America that shows what a data center does to a rural community like our seven properties. So before you guys accept this change, somebody needs to put together a plan, or somebody needs to put together a summary on what it's going to do to the people that live on the golf course and the people that live on the end of Fisher. Because if, I didn't, I didn't buy there to lose 9% value in my house, I, I've leapfrogged four houses to buy a $600,000 house, not to lose 50 grand because we're going to gain tax dollars from a data center and you guys are going to get sewer and water pushed out there for free. And I understand that bringing the data center in, you guys are going to get the sewer and water pushed out there for free, but that doesn't, that doesn't benefit anybody right now because the comprehensive plan to build out there wasn't for years, years to come. So just some, some stuff to think about. I'm against it. Build, build a thousand houses, not a data center.
Thank you.
This will be quick. And you know, 14589 South Robert Trail, so I'm not on Fisher. I am on Emery Avenue every day and it is a beautiful, beautiful area and I really feel for all of these people. I have one comment, when we hear about, well, there's an AUR and it won't go, from what I've watched for the AURs at this city, the proposers, the applicants pay $25,000 to have it advanced, they get their AUR, it goes through everything, it goes through public hearings, you listen, then you approve it, and then it moves on and moves on. And that's fine, but you also have Project Mercury, which is kitty-corner to this one, that I thought was approved for a data center, so it's potential, it's already got the approval, potentially. So that should be out there, that people know that, well, if we get this one in, then we can get that one in. And the same thing happened with the property north of Meta. AUR goes, it gets approved and Meta buys it. So what's going to go in north across the street from Meta? Probably a data center, probably makes sense. I don't know if the people in the apartment buildings next to it will care, but that's something, I'd like to see more transparency so that you actually have public hearings like this all the time, that you don't have one person or no person at your public hearings, but that you have a whole room full that have actually looked at all of this and done something. Now the question I have is for the Dakota East area, at the city council, or no, it was support authority meeting on April 15th, it did say that this is anticipated to begin construction in 2025. I go, so is that feasible? Is, is that the intent that we would like to, if everything gets approved, this will start construction this year?
Well, yeah, we'll take that, we'll answer it, yes, at the end. Any final comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Reed, seconded by Boogie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed, thank you. Appreciate all the thoughtfulness and perspectives that came into this. We're, we're going to go through the, the questions now. I'm going to start sort of at the bottom and work back since there's some fresh ones here. One of the questions was the 2025 timing, is that, is that if all the approvals were to go through, and there's several that would happen here.
I would defer to the applicant for the, any sort of timing questions.
Okay. If the applicant could come up, it may want to stay here a little bit because I think there might be a few of these. I know there's a lot of approvals that need to happen even before we get there, but is that even a feasible timing, that 2025 would be?
Certainly, yeah. Chair and commissioners, our anticipated timeline, given utility rollout, given power rollout, we would expect 2027 for vertical, so infrastructure to go in on the site and 2028 for commencement of, I'm sorry, so horizontal in 2027, vertical 2028.
Okay, thank you.
So, but we would anticipate that applications would come before you, certainly before then.
Okay, thank you. There was another question, it was actually a good point. I know there's been talk about Project Mercury, we here on the commission have not seen anything for that. Can we comment on any potential future conflicts between that, if that's approved, and this development?
And Commissioner Reed, Chair Reed, not really. I'd also note that AURs don't confer any development approvals, just that because there's an AUR out there does not mean that anything has been approved for development on that site. We were asked to review an AUR for that site, but have not heard any further information related to it.
So, since there are no approved plans, we really can't comment on it, yeah, right?
Correct.
And so if, if one of these is approved for the other one, obviously we'd go through the reviews and approval process for the first one, and then the second one, we'd have to weigh in any potential impacts that could be in conflict, right?
Yeah, basically.
Chair Reed, the one thing to note too, and we do speak a lot about AURs, AUArs here in, in Rosemount, it is, as it is a very common planning tool for large-scale development that we, that we often see, and we've seen in our recent history from our development patterns here in town. So we, there are also four other active AURs across Rosemount, it's, it's a very common planning tool. The one that is currently underway as a part of the Dakota East project, that would be the fifth one. So, and, and as Anthony has described, they scope out a variety of mitigation factors for a number of different development proposals. So it doesn't mean that just because it says it's going to be this and here are the mitigation factors for that, that it necessarily translate to that. And I know we, the question was regarding Project Mercury, which was one of the proposed project names a couple of years back, and the AUR for that area just generally east of FedEx is, and north of 42, just for everybody, it's kind of reference about where we're talking about there. It's very common for a landowner to commission that type of work to understand what their development, either ability or constraints would be on a sizable chunk of property.
There was another question about grading and runoff from snow melt. I'm not sure how we kind of addressed that particular question.
So the, the request before the commission tonight is about the comprehensive land use plan amendment. So I would only say that any development that does occur must meet the stormwater pollution prevention requirements of the MPCA in the state of Minnesota and that likely development of that site would result in reduced runoff on neighboring properties because they would be implementing surface water management systems like stormwater ponds and storm sewers and things like that.
That's, that would be my assumption too, but there's, there's a few different questions actually tying to this too. So there, there were questions about Fisher, a bunch of different types of questions about Fisher Avenue there. Can you speak to ownership of Fisher Avenue, what would likely happen with that, which is currently a dirt road, what would happen with that?
So I can just speak from experience with other developments in the area, that if improvements were needed to Fisher Avenue, it would be the responsibility of the developer that's inducing those needs to occur. So it would be at their expense to make those improvements. Now, being that Fisher Avenue is on the border and is shared between Nanniger Township and the city of Rosemount, I would probably defer to our public works director about how that, those agreements are set up, but ultimately if improvements are needed as a result of development, it's the development that would be paying for their construction and implementation.
So we'd be working in concert with Nanniger on how that's handled and getting done effectively?
Yeah, and I would also add, since it did come up about traffic impacts on Highway 55, projects are reviewed by MINDOT or whatever jurisdiction is in charge of, of any adjacent roadways and turn lanes and traffic improvements are determined as part of development proposals with some frequency.
Understood, and I'll just make the comment too, I mean, we, a lot of the detailed questions here and answers came about through the PUD review. here and answers came about through the P U D review. And we had all those departments and utilities companies there to really get into those nuts and bolts, and some of these is, is it?
It's too early, yes.
All right. Um, okay, so there were some other questions on Fisher, I think that would be answered at that time. Uh, there were some questions about the water table, um, and that it's already very low. With extending the use line, this would negate that kind of concern, right? Cause we would be bringing in water rather than using a water table, is that fair or?
Yeah, the existing well that's on the site is an irrigation well. Um, I think staff has provided comment to, um, the applicant and, um, with regards to the A U R about the actual ability of, to reallocate those gallons to the city for a new well or something like that. But the water being used on the site, brought in and, uh, sent out through wastewater would be all through the municipal systems. Uh, they would be, um, provided by the city and drawn from municipal wells that are allocated by the D N R. Um, so it wouldn't be just, you know, taking that well out there and just sticking a straw in it and sucking up water.
So, and, and if I recall, like the, the Meta, you know, they had some num, uh, comparison numbers on how it, the water usage compared, um, to other small businesses, something like two restaurants or something to that effect. When we do get to an actual P U D and a proposal from the applicant, all that water usage would have to be forecasted and factored in and approved, correct?
Yeah, they would have to provide information related to the type of cooling and the anticipated amount of water that would be used for that cooling system. Um, yeah, and Meta did, uh, identify air, using electricity as their primary, primary cooling source, uh, rather than water and their water usages, um, not, uh, to the extent that, um, I think it's commonly anticipated. Uh, I would also add that development of the site, in accordance with the adopted comp plan, is not a zero water user either. Commercial uses, use an incredible amount of water, um, homes, you know, a thousand homes is a lot of water used as well. Um, so it isn't, uh, uh, data center or zero water usage. Um, but again, uh, getting back to the fact that the, the request before the commission is really, uh, about the comprehensive land use plan and, uh, regiding to business park at this point. We can't really answer those specifics, um, at this point in the process.
What, uh, one other question, this does relate to the comp plan and, and land usage, you know, um, from an aesthetic standpoint, right? So if I live on Fisher, um, and right now there's, there is our agriculture there, um, assuming this were to go through and approved and was business park, what kind of aesthetics would, would I, would I expect in terms of setbacks and landscaping and things like that, so it wouldn't be like, there's big building with big lights right in front of me? What, what would I expect, uh, with that kind of land use and setbacks?
So at minimum, um, the business park land use does have, uh, the land use, or, um, excuse me, the business park zoning district, the B two employment district, does have requirements for screening and buffering through berms and, and landscaping and whatnot. Uh, those are just kind of the standard, um, code, uh, requirements. Uh, the applicant, for a large project like a data center, uh, the applicant would be expected to provide view sheds or sections showing what the actual, uh, sightlines would be. Uh, there would be some, uh, negotiation between the city and the applicant on berming and buffering and, um, setbacks and vegetation and landscaping and things like that. So, um, that's negotiated through the P U D process, uh, but also expecting submittal materials that have, um, sightlines and, and sections and view sheds and things like that.
As an applicant, when you've done these before, um, how, how do you engage the, the residents, the public that, that are adjacent? Do you include them in reviewing what the plans are going to look like and landscaping and get input? How do you typically handle that?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Uh, as you heard from some of the adjacent property owners, we have started that process. So, uh, we, we do typically have a, a robust public engagement process. Um, as I think Ms. Dimick noted, Kristen Dean has been leading that process, uh, and we've, uh, we've definitely worked on reaching out to those individuals, particularly, I believe the individuals to the south who are, are most directly affected. But there will be additional public engagement throughout the process and, of course, numerous public hearings, uh, before anything would ever be constructed on site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, there were some other questions, which I, 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 it may be premature, there was a question like cooling towers, for example, is that something we just have to defer until?
Yeah, that would be part of the planned unit development and site plan review process.
And I, I, I think I understand that, but it's good to kind of make sure people know that, because we're not, we don't want to avoid any, any other questions or, or points.
And if, and if I may, Chair Reed too, to provide a little bit of context, because it did come up, but, um, uh, as someone said, Tract is a, is a master developer, where they come in and they put the roads in and the infrastructure, and then end users come in by the sites and develop them. That's exactly what we've seen in Amber Fields. Maplewood Development came in, bought the land, put in the roads, put in the utilities, and then, um, you know, different builders came in, built, Pulte, we didn't know the end users then either. So I just want to provide some context of that. It is not unusual at all as a, a development process. There are master developers that come in on the front end with the end users coming in at the back end and kind of completing the process of site plan reviews and development.
Any follow-up questions or points other commissioners picked up on that we wanted to discuss?
I just have a couple. Um, so we heard comments about, uh, you know, balancing, uh, the agriculture in the city with development, and then the question was kind of brought up was like, how much is too much? And so I guess, how do you guys look at that from your view? Like, you know, if we've got one data center already, uh, in flight and then, you know, potentially this one, and then potentially Mercury as well, like where is, what's kind of the end view of like, how much would be too much?
Well, I think it's a big question for the landowners, because I think people have property rights and how they want to, um, see them used and developed and, uh, you know, it's, it's not for the city to say, someone who has, um, you know, a hundred acres can't sell that land if there's an opportunity for them to do so. Um, so it, from a balance standpoint, the city really isn't in a position to say, sorry, this is egg and you have to keep it egg forever. You can't sell it, you can't do anything with it, um, because your neighbors like their view. That's just not how the city works.
Chair, yeah, Chair and Commissioner, um, you know, another thing to consider as you, you, you think through the request before you this evening and, you know, weighing the comments that we've heard from a number of residents here too, is that we, we, we tend to hear and focus a lot on a specific user or a very specific use. So, and we, we don't want to be so naive to think that, well, we're only talking about the comp plan, that's the only thing we can talk about. I mean, that's, that's not realistic, that's not the narrative that we're hearing from the public as we talk through any type of large scale development process. The thing that we should make sure that we also keep in mind though, is that when we're talking about a land use change or comp plan amendment, we're looking at the, I'm kind of pointing to the screen now, that, that's up in front of us, Anthony put together a nice comparison, a kind of a before and a potential, a potentially after, and what that shift looks like. It's not currently entirely agricultural or a rural residential living perspective out here, it's, it's a shift. It's a significant shift. I think everybody that sees that would acknowledge that and understand that, that is a significant shift. But also consider and keep in mind that we're not talking about a singular type of use that could only be located here, but any types of uses that would be allowed under that land use or then the subsequent zoning. I mean, you have an applicant that's proposing this because they have a desired outcome. That doesn't mean that, that would be the only outcome or the only possible outcome. So it just kind of things to think through as we're looking at this from a, a global or a bigger picture shift, that's the request before us, but understanding that it's a bit more nuanced than it's just farms or data center. It's not quite that.
And I think, yeah, my follow-up question then, like, you know, obviously this site was identified with a, with an outcome in mind. Um, I guess for the applicant, the question is like, what do you look for in identifying a site? And then why was this site identified as being an opportune site for the outcome?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, I think that would be a good question for the applicant here.
Yeah, uh, thank you Chair, that's a great question. And I think first and foremost is a, a willing landowner who's, who's looking to redevelop and, and to sell the site. Um, you know, Tract is, is a company that, uh, that does develop, uh, but also builds, uh, data centers and, uh, data centers are large, right? So, uh, typically what we're looking for is, is consolidated, uh, large tracts of, of land that, that have, um, willing landowners and, um, you know, and, and, uh, you know, suitable grade, you know, there's not terrible topography, there's, there's not a, a lot of wetlands, so, um, yeah, but it really comes down to just the seller.
Thank you.
I have a question. So am I to the understanding that one person owns 420 acres or how is, what is the current, maybe that was mentioned in the packet and I missed it, but?
Two landowners?
There's two landowners. One owns approximately 80 acres and the rest is held by the other one.
Okay, so between the two, they own the 420 acres. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
So another, um, and I'm not going to speak for the, the landowners, I don't know if they're here tonight. No? Um, the landowners?
Do you? Do you have a question?
The land, yes, I do, I do. The two landowners that own the two to equal 420 acres, right? My question, I guess, is, maybe it's just a, a comment, is, um, if I'm a landowner and I'm, I'm interested in selling the land, is the landowner really concerned or, they're not running the narrative of what's going to be built there. They're just saying, my land's for sale, it's open to whoever wants to pay the highest price, I guess. Is that?
I think.
The landowner is not dictating what it's going to be for.
I, I can't speak to that, but I think it probably is, uh, can go both ways. A landowner could look for a, a specific user or not sell to someone based on what they think is going to happen, but they can also just say they don't care and sell it to whoever.
Okay. Okay, with that, with that in mind, um, my, my personal opinion, like I said, I'm here as a planning commissioner to decide on if I want to change the proposed land use. And so as a planning commissioner, looking at the screen tonight, I am not comfortable in voting to change it to the new proposed 420 acres. I see the land use here currently agriculture, commercial, high density, medium density, low density, and to me, just in listening to the folks here tonight, thank you for coming, by the way. Um, I just, I guess I, I'm comfortable with what it's being used for now as a designation.
Um, it's good, by good timing to get, get, get some feedback on this. And I'll, I'll, I'll go next. I, um, I, I, I have a lot of concerns about the actual plans and, and, and at the stage in which we see those, I'm confident that the city will lead, uh, a thorough review of that and will be part of that with the residents and so on. Um, in terms of the, the land use designation in and of itself, I am in favor of this. Having, you know, seen the broader plans for many years now, um, and, and we've reviewed, I remember Fisher Avenue, we reviewed the mining, we talked about a lot of the, the bust there and the traffic and kids and safety. And so we've, we've, we've reviewed these areas, uh, a lot over the years. The one thing I'm most, um, in favor of here is how we set this up as a, a transition zone. We've got the waste management to the northwest. I don't think we're going to get, uh, a lot of residential or even this much, as Commissioner, our new Commissioner Arnott pointed out, can, uh, commercial convenience there, or community convenience. Um, I think this is a, a good change in terms of how we've got it structured here and fitting in the overall plans. Lot of going questions about, um, the residents to the east and how we buffer them and with the developer when that stage comes. But in terms of what's in front of us here, I think this is, this is a good move for the city, uh, in, in terms of what the net benefits will be. Other commissioners want to comment?
Just so I can understand again, our process, sometimes we talk about, you know, when we've got a development piece in front of us, that if someone meets certain criteria, you know, essentially the planning commission's job then is to say, yes, we've got evidence that they meet these criteria and then they by right, they have the right to do with this, with, with their land, you know? This is not that, right? This is more of a legislative, I think you made the comment, is a legislative decision of, is this the direction that we want the city to go? I mean, speaking very broadly, at least at this point. And then later on, we get to the questions of, okay, if, if we make this change, then there's different criteria that need to be hidden things down the road, but this is that legislative question, not anything by right at this point, that we would have to act on. Okay. From my perspective, I agree with you, Commissioner Reed, that this is progress in quotation marks, right? Where some people are finding it to be progress and other people not, and it, we can't make everyone happy, but I, I, to your point, I think that eastern edge of the city has always been, you know, that node and with the, the cha, traffic changes on 55, that was always going to be rejiggered a little bit, but I think you're right, I think it's a, a buffer zone there, it's not, it's not inappropriate in my mind.
And just to reflect on what you said, I think, yeah, I think the details in terms of how the actual plans come together, a lot of discussion and collaboration needed to make sure that we do make it as aesthetically pleasing to the city and the residents as possible. Any other commissioner comments?
You want to take a vote?
Would somebody like to take, make a motion?
Yeah, I got to it. I was going to say, I've been blacked out, I can't.
All right, I'll, I'll go, I'll go.
Okay, I got to it. Make a motion, recommend a motion to, uh, recommend the city council adopt the proposed comprehensive guide plan amendment to change the land use designation from C C, community, commercial, A G, agriculture, high density residential, medium density residential, low density residential to business park and to extend the metropolitan urban services boundary to include the subject property, subject to acceptance by the city council and the Dakota East A U R.
Motion by Commissioner Bujie, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, it's seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have, um, Commissioner Rivera saying nay, and all the other commissioners saying yea. Uh, motion passes. Uh, what is the next step for this one?
Um, Chair Reed, I would just like to let you know too, uh, the tentative city council date on the staff report says May 20th, I believe that's actually going to be June 3rd. Um, so it is a little bit, uh, longer duration between the two meetings than usual, but uh, that will give the city council time to review the A U R as well.
Okay, thank you Anthony.
Um, so next steps would be, um, coming to the city council for their review of the planning commission's recommendation. Um, as I said, there's also the Dakota East A U R that is, um, in process. Um, and then, um, I guess in kind of, the city will be, uh, anticipating, uh, some development applications or at least some, um, preliminary plans to work through the P U D process.
Unbelievable.
Okay, thank you Anthony. Uh, then thank you to those who came tonight, they, to offer your, uh, input, we really do appreciate that. Uh, a lot of good questions. Um, so that ends, uh, the number of, uh, items on the public hearings agenda. Is there any new business?
Uh, there is no new business tonight, Mr. Chair.
Um, any other items for discussion?
Mr. Chair, the one thing I will make the planning commission aware of is that the Port Authority at their meeting on May 20th, um, that is where we will be having StanTech provide some updated, um, renderings for the visioning documents that they've been working on. Uh, we've had a couple of joint meetings with the Port Authority previously to talk about the updated Highway 42 corridor updates. So just to potentially earmark that on your calendars for their meeting on May 20th, we'd be inviting you to a joint meeting with the Port Authority, and more details to come.
Great. And then either, for, for those who maybe have not been part of those initial discussions, is there background material that's available or pre-read material we might be able to?
We'll certainly provide, um, you know, the necessary material as either part of a staff memo or other, other materials so that everybody can get caught up to speed.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I think there's an appreciation, volunteer appreciation too, at the end of the month, the 29th, I think.
Yep, Tuesday the 20th.
29th at the Steeple Center?
Is it 29th? Okay, Tuesday at the Steeple Center, yep.
Thank you for that.
Yep, so everybody should have received an invitation to that. Yeah, another good event coming up, thanking everybody for the time and dedication they put into volunteering on our boards and commissions.
All right, thank you. I think with that, then we'll adjourn for the night. Thank you, everyone.